Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight on this foggy evening. Today is December 5, 2013. This is a special town meeting for the Town of Spencer called to decide fourteen articles dealing with the municipal budget, capital expenditure, a prior year's expense, and bylaw proposals. My name is Peter Adams and I'm your town moderator. I am advised that we have a quorum and call the meeting to order waiving the reading of the return of the warrant and noting for the record that it has been served and posted as required by law. For those of you who are willing or able, would you please rise? We're going to first have a moment of silence in memory of Nelson Mandela, who passed away Thank you. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you travel down Main Street in Spencer, you may notice a marker near the Sogden Block commemorating the Henry Knox expedition in the winter of 1775 and 1776. On this date, 238 years ago, a 25-year-old bookseller, under the authority of the Massachusetts Committee of Safety and the Second Continental Congress, began the transport by boat and oxen-drawn sleds of 60 tons of armament, 59 pieces in all, some weighing in excess of 5,000 pounds, from Fort Ticonderoga, New York, a small military outpost near the southern tip of Lake Champlain. Following a southerly route through New York, over primitive roads and half-frozen rivers and lakes, and then traversing the Berkshires, he made his way eastward in the dead of winter and passed through this town in mid-January. After 250 miles, utilizing over 100 teams of oxen, volunteers from Massachusetts, Connecticut, and New York, he completed this epic ten-week struggle and presented the armaments to General Washington. These armaments were placed on Dorchester Heights, were aimed at the British regulars in Boston and their ships in the harbor, and forced the evacuation of the British from Boston and provided the first glimmer of hope that this country might endure. I express my thanks to the crew of Spencer Cable Access for their continued support of your right to know through the telecast of this meeting. On the stage, seated to my right is the Select Board. Gary Woodbury is the chair. Donnie Berthium is a member. Tony Pepe is clerk. In the back is Adam Gardett, the town administrator. The Finance Committee, Mary Brainey, is the chair, and she'll introduce the members of the Finance Committee.
Members of the Finance Committee, to my left, Paul McLaughlin, Tom Parker, and our newest member, Nancy Tame. And then behind me is Nancy Herholtz, Bill Wall, and Chris Bowen.
Thank you. Seated to my left is town clerk Laura Torri. The ground rules for tonight, questions of parliamentary procedure, will be decided under the town bylaw by town meeting time. That's here. If you want to look at it, come on up. I'd gladly give it to you to read. The articles will be considered as follows. The motion will be read by myself and summarized by myself. We will accept the Finance Committee recommendation, and then the moving party, and then any speaker. To be recognized, just yell "Mr. Moderator," raise your hand, make yourself visible. Ground rules for addressing the meeting, you must use the microphone in front, identify yourself, and give your home address. Amendments on an article must be in writing and must be seconded. I have forms here which are available if you want to amend an article. Reconsideration, that will be entertained if notice is given from the floor immediately after the article is voted on, and that the reconsidered article is again voted on at the current session. That means it would have to be voted on again tonight before we dissolve the meeting. Thank you for attending as we continue this purest form of democracy. Article One. I move to waive the reading and approve Article One as printed on the warrant. Motion is made by Mr. Fritz, seconded by Mr. Pepe. The article calls for the payment of $1,054.08, which represents a prior year expense for the Water Department. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Fritz?
[inaudible]
Thank you.
All right. What they did is they, when the new pumping station went on Highland Street, they were sending the bill to Highland Street, because that's not our office. So the bill never got, they went back to the mail office and they sent it back to National Grid. So this year here, we got that, and they, after July 1st, so we have to pay that bill because it was for the last year up there on Highland Street. So that's why we have to do this with a nine-tenths vote.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz. The bill represents a transfer, does not represent anything additional on your taxes. However, because it involves a prior year expense, it requires a nine-tenths vote. Is there, are there any more questions? Are there any questions at all? I see none, you're ready for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those that are opposed? I see none, we'll declare that as unanimous vote. Article Two. I move to waive the reading and approve Article Two as printed on the warrant. Article Two is to see if the town will vote to amend Article Fifteen from the May 2, 2013 town meeting in order to raise and appropriate the additional sum of $1,800. Mr. Stevens, excuse me. The motion is by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Fritz. Finance Committee, please.
The Finance Committee recommended unanimously to approve this article because it is a matter of state law. There's really not any choice in it.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Just to let you know, as Mary said, there is, we don't have any choice on this. We do have to provide for transportation. But in this case, as often happens, you know, we prepare the budgets in the spring based on rates we receive from the transportation company, and it went from $125 a day to $135 a day. So that explains the, this difference of $1,800.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Requires a majority vote. Thank you. Those that are opposed? I see one. Then the motion carries by a majority vote. Article Three. I move to waive the reading and approve Article Three as printed on the warrant. Article Three involves a transfer of $8,000 for additional transportation expenses similar to Article Two. The motion I have is by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Fritz. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Just to let you know what's behind the $8,000. The real cost of transporting a student to this school from Spencer is actually $36,000. We were able, as a result of Adams' investigation, to find a way to Carpool or a couple of other towns. We thought it was going to come in a little lower. We had budgeted a 10. We have to add eight, so 18 being our share, but we still managed to come up better than the, than the original cost.
All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those that are opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries by a majority vote.
Thank you.
Article Four. I move to waive the reading and approve Article Four as printed on the warrant. Article Four is a motion to rescind Article Five from the annual town meeting of May 2 for purposes of voting to approve a subsequent article that will correct the required Spencer-Eastbrookfield Regional School District assessment contributions in accordance with the decision of the Commissioner of the Department of Education for the fiscal year 2014. Motion is by Mr. Woodbury, seconded by Mr. Berthium, requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends, recommends approval.
Mr. Woodbury?
As you'll see in the upcoming article, we're going to make an adjustment to cover what the state has told us that we have to fund the school with. We need to rescind this before we can move on to the next one.
So Article Five, then, was the appropriation for the school, and this article would rescind that so we can reestablish that budget figure for the town. Questions or comments? Requires a majority vote. Those in favor, please. Thank you. Those opposed? I see none. It's a unanimous vote. Article Five. Article Five is an authorization to appropriate the revised fiscal 2014 assessment for the regional school district consisting of the minimum local contribution, transportation, additional local transportation, debt and capital assessments. The motion I have is that I move to see if the town will vote as a block, provided that any amount stated herein shall be for the use of the Spencer-Eastbrookfield Regional School District for the fiscal year 2014 in accordance with the decision of the Commissioner of the Department of Education for said fiscal year and to, one, raise and appropriate the sum of $5,473,093 for the operating assessment account number 11300-56000, which represents the amount required for the minimum local contribution. Two, raise and appropriate the sum of $1,138,708 for the operating assessment account 11300-56,000, which represents the amount required for the transportation assessment. Three, raise and appropriate the sum of $701,428 for the operating assessment account number 11300-56,000, which represents the amount required for the additional local contribution. And four, raise and appropriate the sum of $336,219 for the purpose of paying the cost of the long-term debt assessment account number 11300-56,000, which represents the amount required, excuse me, for previously approved building and school design projects that include Wyre Village School, $259,394, and David Proudy High School, $45,200 for payment number three, and $31,625 for payment number four. The motion that I have, which varies from the motion which was printed in the warrant, is made by Mr. Woodbury and seconded by Mr. Berthium. The reason for the difference in the figures between what appeared in the warrant as posted and what you are asked to vote on here tonight is the decision which was rendered by the Commissioner to set the school budget for the Town of Spencer. The assessments were then made, and this has to be reflected in our budget. Motion is by Mr. Woodbury, seconded by Mr. Berthium. It requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
We met at 6:30 this evening because we waited to get the final figures for this article, and by a vote of eight in favor and one abstention, we met, we recommend approval.
Mr. Woodbury?
Again, what you're looking at now is an adjustment from what was printed originally. When we closed the warrant, we set the worst scenario. When the Commissioner set the budget for us, it came out to these numbers, and this is what we're here to vote on tonight.
Questions or comments? I see none. Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? I see none opposed. That's a unanimous vote in favor. The motion carries. Article Six. Article Six is an authorization to rescind the previously approved article for the fiscal 2014 general government operating budget. This is the other half of the equation, now that we've dealt with the school portion of the budget. Motion I have is to waive the reading and approve Article Six as printed on the warrant. Requires a majority vote. Motion is by Mr. Berthium, seconded by Mr. Woodbury. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Berthium?
This is just like one of the previous articles. This is just to rescind our overall budget number, so the next article, we can approve the real number. The new number, sorry.
All right. So this wipes the slate clean, and the next article will deal with reenacting or adopting a budget for the, for the non-school portion of our budget. Questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? I see none. The motion carries by unanimous vote. Article Seven. Article Seven is an authorization to appropriate the revised fiscal 2014 general government operating budget. Motion I have is by Mr. Woodbury, seconded, excuse me, by Mr. Berthium, seconded by Mr. Woodbury. The motion differs from what is printed in the warrant, and it reads as follows. I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,222,334 to pay for the operations of the general government expenses for fiscal year 2014, and to meet said appropriation from a transfer of $60,000 from the overlay surplus account, a transfer of $10,000 from the wetlands protection fund, a transfer of $400,000 from certified and available free cash, and from taxation from available funds in the Treasury and anticipated receipts as may be needed or decided necessary. Again, the motion by Mr. Berthium, seconded by Mr. Woodbury. This represents a higher figure than what you saw within the original warrant article. It is, however, within the four corners of the original proposal, which was to rescind the budget and adopt a new budget. This motion is proper, and it's ready for action. Finance Committee, please.
Again, we, when we met at 6:30 this evening, we took a vote on this article. We voted unanimously to recommend approval, however, with some cautionary words. First, I want to compliment Adam Gardett for the incredible amount of work he did, searching out everything that he could to make this budget work without affecting positions. It was a tremendous amount of, as we watched the process over several months, of just going through everything that he could go through. Secondly, we want to be sure that everyone understands that because we are passing this budget, and we will have it for the rest of this fiscal year, this does not mean that we will not have serious issues facing us as we work on the budget for the next year. To begin with, we're using $400,000 in free cash. That is a one-time revenue, and we're using it for operating expenses, for recurring expenses. As you all know from all the years that we've been going through this process, that is something that is not done. It, generally, this money is used at the end of the year, once free cash is certified, for capital expenses for the following year. So the fact that there will be less money for capital expenses is one thing, but more concerning is that we are using one-time revenue, as I said, to balance an operating expense budget. There were many other things that have been cut out of here. Work on Maple Street for the senior center is one of them, and others. Those needs do not go away. This is what gets, these decisions are what get us through the rest of this fiscal year. So I know I've heard some talk that, that there's, that folks think, well, perhaps we really can do without all these funds, since Mr. Gardett and the selectmen have found ways to fund the budget for the rest of the year without using them. Do we really need them? And that's something that you really are going to have to think about as we work on the budget for the rest of the fiscal, for the next fiscal year. So we in the Finance Committee have concerns, but we have unanimously voted to recommend this budget.
Thank you. Mr. Berthium?
Mary's right, and we share those concerns. Unfortunately, with half the year being gone and half the money basically being spent, we really didn't have a choice. As long as I have been on the board many years before, the town, the town fathers and the administrators do not use free cash or any one-time monies to run the budget. Historically, that's why we get audits that have zero issues, and the town is run very well financially, not so much as how much money we have, but how we spend it. So we, we share those concerns, but we, we are in a predicament here where we'd like to keep all the services, or at least as many as we can. So we're down this process where we're going to have to use some free cash. So if everybody got this handout coming, and it explains in here some of the things we're cutting and some of the areas we had to reduce to get through until June 30th. I know at our last meeting, Adam mentioned to us, and we mentioned him as well, that we're going to start on next year's budget shortly. So just after the first year, we're going to have department head meetings and try to get a jump on it so we can be ready for the May town meeting, our next annual town meeting. But for the rest of this year, we think this is the best route to go, and pretty much the only way we can handle it from here on out without seriously cutting or affecting any of the services in town. If anybody has specific questions that I can't answer, Adams, standing by.
Questions or comments?
James Whalen, Eight School Street. My only question I have is on the revenue side, and I'm not sure exactly who I would address this question to. Whoever has the answer would be great. I recently became aware that there's an 8% tax delinquency rate here in Spencer among certain properties. I didn't know if that number is included in the fiscal 2013 tax levy limit, or if that's money that we're still waiting on, or whatever the case may be, and how that would affect next year's budget.
Mr. Gardett?
The, the revenue portion of the budget talks about raising tax levy limit up to $12,285,000. That is an estimate. That's 100% evaluation, tax rate, everything being collected. You're correct, we don't collect every year 100% rate. I think we're actually higher than that. I think we're about 95% rate. So, but in the course of this year, we're also collecting back taxes from previous years. So at the end of the day, we pretty much run at 100%.
Does that answer your question? Other questions or comments?
David Glass, 123 South Spencer Road. Mr. Moderator, my question is basically about the $10,000 transfer from the Wetlands Protection Fund. I'm wondering now, is that going to leave them with enough money to do whatever they need to do? And whatever that amount is, is it going to be sufficient, or are they going to have to, we'll select the Conservation Commission, and they're going to have to increase their fees or something to make up the difference that this $10,000 transfer? Is there somebody here that can answer that, please?
Mr. Gardett? Thank you, Mr. Glass.
The $10,000 that's in this article, that's being transferred from the Wetlands Protection Fund, was also there in May. It was there last year and years previously. Typically, every year, we will transfer $10,000 out of that account. That account represents a portion of fees collected by the Conservation Commission for different applications. They're able to build up that account, and then we transfer $10,000 every year to go towards our operating budget, so indirectly that money will pay for administrative staff services within the Conservation Commission. So their operating budget is fully funded. That's essentially a reserve fund that we tend to transfer some money out to help us out with the budget. So they should be okay.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. So we're ready for the vote. All those in favor, majority vote. Please raise your cards. Thank you. Those that are opposed? I see no opposition. That's a unanimous vote, and the article carries. Article Eight. Article Eight is an authorization to transfer monies to fund a capital expenditure in the amount of $38,000. This is an expenditure for the Fire Department for turnout gear. Motion I have is to waive the reading and approve Article Eight as printed on the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Fritz and seconded by Mr. Pepe. Requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Fritz?
The firemen in this town, we have turnout gear, and there is an expiration date on it, and And I guess we had quite a few uniforms that were out of date, so that's why we requested this, and we took the money out of those accounts. So, the firemen, at least when they go into a fire, are fully geared the way they're supposed to be.
Okay, it keeps our firemen safe. Questions, comments? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. I see no opposition, and it's a unanimous vote, and the article carries. Article 9. Article 9 is an authorization to accept a drain easement. It's a real estate question. It's at 18 Lincoln Street. The motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article 9 as printed on the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Fritz, seconded by Mr. Pepe. Requires a two-thirds vote, because we're dealing with real estate. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Fritz.
What this is, is we've got a drain. It goes through this guy's backyard. It goes out to the old side mill pond, and he's giving us an easement to get over there. So, in case we have to work on the pipe that we can get there and do it with a backhoe or whatever.
Fairly standard article. We do this a few times a year. And thanks to the landowners who help us out with this. Questions or comments? Ready for the vote? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Opposed? I see none. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 10. Article 10 is an authorization to amend the general bylaws. Motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article 10 as printed on the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Pepe, seconded by Mr. Stevens. This concerns adding a little time for payment of your dog license fees. Mr. Pepe.
This is basically a one-sentence change to the bylaw that if the deadline, June 30th, falls on a holiday or a Saturday, we will allow you to pay by the next business day before the fine is assessed.
So, potentially saves you 15 bucks if you're a little late getting up to the town hall. Questions or comments? Majority vote required. Finance Committee, please. I'm sorry.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Those opposed? I see no opposition, and that carries by unanimous vote. Article 11. Article 11 is a motion to amend the general bylaws. This concerns fire lane violations. Motion I have is I move to approve, I move to waive the reading and approve Article 11 as printed on the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Pepe, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Pepe.
After a review of all the departments on fines and fees, we as a board thought this was an appropriate amount to fine for this offense. We also did a comparison of surrounding communities.
Are there questions about the bylaw? Requires a majority vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Those opposed? And the motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 12. Article 12 is another authorization to amend the general bylaws. Motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article 12 as printed on the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Pepe, seconded by Mr. Stevens. This concerns Article 11, Section 5, noncriminal disposition for the Highway Department. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Pepe made the motion. Mr. Stevens seconded. Mr. Pepe, please.
Again, as a result of the review of fees and fines for the town at the request of the Highway Department, we made a change to some of their fines with fine schedules and changes to some individual offense amounts. Some of these fines and fees weren't changed, haven't been changed since 2008.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, we did.
Other questions? Ready for the vote? All those in favor? Thank you. Those opposed? We have a unanimous crowd tonight. Thank you. That passes by unanimous vote. Article 13 is authorization to accept state legislation. This is, I move to waive the reading and approve Article 13 as printed on the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Fritz. This concerns the adoption of Chapter 40, Section 22F, for the purpose of increasing lien certificate fees. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens made the motion. Mr. Fritz seconded. Mr. Stevens.
Just to point out, this is an opportunity for us to increase fees over statutory limits. The state sets a, the fee it set for the certificate, it goes back to the 1980s, and it's been $25 ever since. So, to help cover the cost of keeping our offices going, we decided that $50 would be a reasonable charge. This is, as you know, fees are not a huge source of income. We're looking at areas where we feel like they haven't kept pace with the expenses of running the town hall.
Questions or comments? Ready for the vote? All those in favor? Thank you. Those opposed? I see one opposed. The motion carries by a majority vote. Article 14. Article 14 is an authorization to amend the zoning bylaws. And the motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article 14 as printed on the warrant. This requires a two-thirds vote, because it's a zoning amendment. The motion is by Mr. Whalen, the Planning Board Chairman, seconded by Mr. Berthew. This is your marijuana zoning bylaw. Yes, sir.
Again, my name's James Whalen, the Chair of the Planning Board. If you read any of the handout that was given earlier, the Planning Board has been working on this bylaw for quite some time since the May 2nd town meeting. We decided to come to revisit it. About six months later, Department of Health had come out with their regulations, and we decided to pursue this a little bit further. After much discussion and debate amongst the Planning Board members, we've come to what you see in front of you. This was the result of using a lot of research from Copman and Page, and our town planner, Michelle Buck, obtained that and used a lot of the language you see in this bylaw. The two things that stand out, obviously, if you've never read what was given when we walked in, was the issue of the town center and the setbacks. This was the majority of the Planning Board's discussion, and we have come to the compromise you see in front of you. Thank you.
State your point of order. You don't. You're right. Finance Committee, please.
Again, this vote was taken at our meeting this evening. And in, with eight in favor and one opposed, the Finance Committee voted to defer to the recommendation of the Planning Board.
All right, I'm in receipt of a motion to amend this bylaw. The motion to amend is made by Mr. Berthew, seconded by Mr. Woodbury. You're going to have to follow through on this. I have five points which are asked to be amended from the printed article that you have. The first is to amend Section 2E, Business and Consumer Services, by changing SP, that's Special Permit, to N, that's No, for the Town Center or TC District. Second one, to amend Section 4.8.8.C.1 by deleting the following text at the end of the first sentence, quote, "And in the center of town, TC District pursuant to a special permit," close quotes. Three, to amend Section 4.8.8.D by deleting the following text, quote, "In zoning districts where a RMD special permit is required, the Planning Board shall be the special permit granting authority, the SPGA," close quotes. Four, to amend Section 4.8.8.F by deleting the following text, exemption from RMD special permit requirement, and, quote, "Are not required to obtain a special permit," but, close quotes. So that the sentence shall read as follows. RMDs that demonstrate that they are protected pursuant to the agricultural exemption under Chapter 40A, Section 3, shall apply for site plan approval pursuant to Section 7.4," close quotes. And finally, number five, to strike the proposed amendments to Section 7.2.1 special permit granting authority. So, an RMD is a registered marijuana dispensary. Mr. Berthew, this is your motion. It's seconded by Mr. Woodbury. I will defer on the Finance Committee. If you want to say anything later on, I'll leave it up to you after we have a little discussion. Mr. Berthew.
All right. So, as you know, at the last annual town meeting, we did the moratorium for a year just for this purpose, so there could be many meetings and much discussion. The last Planning Board public hearing I went to to convey the opinion of our board. And I'll show you the map, just, I don't know if you can see it all that well. But the areas in question, or you see this light purple section in the middle of town? This is a certain area on Pleasant Street, Grove Street, Maple Street, Mechanic Street, Summa Chestnut and Elm. These are all residential neighborhoods. This is the issue that we have. Commercial and industrial, commercial, industrial. All the red and the pink areas are where it would be available. It's where it should be, we think, in the commercial, industrial section. So, those four bullet, or five bullet points that Peter just read would eliminate that center part of town, because those are all residential neighborhoods. And obviously, we think, and I'm sure a lot of people do, that this doesn't belong in a residential neighborhood. The moratorium runs out on June 30th. I'm pretty sure we can't do another one. So, it was thought that we'd try to do an amendment tonight rather than just shoot it down. I did ask the Planning Board at the end of their meeting, and Jim was right, that a majority of their board voted for the way this is written. That if this failed at town meeting, would they come back in May and take out the Town Center part of it? So, and they agreed. All the members agreed. So, I would say that we should just get rid of that now so it doesn't go uptown. And we'll have it in two commercial, industrial ones. It'll be done tonight, and end of story. Any questions?
All right, so I understand, then, Mr. Berthew, that the intent of this amendment is to eliminate the availability of this within the Town Center District.
Exactly. And once again, that's all residential areas.
Thank you. And the Planning Board has rendered its report as required by law on the original proposal. The Finance Committee prepared to make a recommendation? Questions on the amendment? The amendment has to be decided first, and then we'll go back and vote on the whole article. The amendment requires a majority vote. So, the amendment proposes to change this, to essentially limit these things to areas outside of the Town Center. Seeing none, requires a majority vote. Voting on the amendment. Do you wish to amend this article as presented by Mr. Berthew? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The article is amended. Last chance for any comments or questions. Seeing none? Yes. Mr. Clutier.
Mr. Moderator. Vinnie Clutier, 17 Northwest Road. If this article is voted down, this bylaw is voted down this evening, correct me if I'm wrong, does our zoning bylaws state that if a specific use is not allowed, that it is strictly prohibited in our community?
Mr. Berthew?
No, not on this. We tried that with the AG. So, what would happen if we voted down tonight? Vinnie, is the moratorium would stay in place until June 30th? And so, at the annual town meeting, we'd have to come back and try it again. Unfortunately, it doesn't, we tried that one with this one because of, you know, the way it's...
So, we have to allow this in our community?
Mr. Whalen, you want to address that? Thank you.
So, just to kind of bring this back quite a bit. This goes back to the popular referendum. Was it last election, I believe? Yeah, when we had the question on marijuana dispensary. The entire state voted in favor of having these to be allowed. So, what came down was, at the moment, it's five licenses would be given in every county. As of right now in Spencer, the Planning Board is not aware of any applications to open one up. However, we have to have something on our books as a minimum. That's the short story, essentially.
Thank you. Mr. Berthew.
James is right. It's up to five per locality, up to 130. I don't know. I got school numbers still in my head, so... But there has been no applicants interested in Spencer yet. And these are just the dispensaries, the places where it's sold, the actual growing places, and I forget the acronym for them. Those are agriculturally exempt, so they can go anywhere. But those have to be indoors, inside a building. So, you won't see marijuana fields when you drive by. It has to be a controlled thing with certain amounts of security. So, one of those could open up a town, and we can't say no. But those aren't typically the issue. It's, where you have the issues is the actual dispensary itself. So, all we're trying to do, everything else in this would stay the same, is just eliminate those residential areas in the Town Center and keep it in commercial, industrial. But if this does go down tonight, and this does not get passed, then we will come back at May town meeting. So, the moratorium would stay in effect until we either vote the changes, or if we did not vote at May town meeting, something went down, the moratorium will go away. And then there will be no zoning for it. So, it could go anywhere.
Further questions? Requires a two-thirds vote. If you are in favor of the amended article, please raise your cards. Thank you. If you are opposed? Thank you. Chair will declare that the motion carries by a vote of 98 to 2. Mr.? One moment. Mr. Berthew.
Just one thing. The other day, I believe it was November 26th, there were reports there were some suspects in town running around that had robbed some stores or some banks locally. Not in this town, but other towns. We'd like to give kudos and congratulations to our officers, Scott Griffin and Jim Murray. They were an integral part of this. Officer Scott Griffin was the guy that originally spotted the car and started the pursuit against these guys. And they caught two of them right away and got the other ones a short time after. So, congratulations, guys. You did a super job. And thanks to our police chief. And that just goes to show the type of police department we have. I mean, we have a police chief that does a phenomenal job, and he's one of the best around. So, to those guys and the whole police department, thank you very much.
The Chair will entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting, made by Mr. Shamet, seconded by Mr. Whalen. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, and good night.